Um, you know, I don't, I don't need to go into everything very depth, but it is kind of a significant. I did this last year as well, and I just kind of like to, this is the grand theft on the sale. Um, that passed at approximately eleven ten P M from last year's session. This is one thousand four hundred thirty-four pages. Uh, that was passed in the state legislation with not a single person reading it. Um, because it dropped down eleven ten and it was not available on, you know, it's not available. Um, but anyways, just to be a little brief update. Uh, this was my first term in, um, the state house and, uh, it was, uh, historic. Additionally, we had, we went into this with over a nineteen million dollar surplus, which has been spent. Uh, we raised taxes in the state of Minnesota. Our budget has increased, this is our state budget moving forward forty percent. And, um, that is very concerning for most people who are at all fiercely conservative. Or if you ever run, uh, government, um, or even even a household or business, it would be similar to having a budget of a hundred thousand dollars and looking forward and saying, you know, next year we're gonna spend a hundred and forty thousand, but we're not exactly sure where that money is coming from. And so, looking out, um, for everyone sitting, looking forward in the state of Minnesota, we really have, um, some early concerns about the budget in, in, um, Minnesota and where it's going. Um, in twenty twenty-four, we were able to do some fixes. So one of the big ones was the school resource officer that was in the village twenty twenty-three, which passed and it was causing a lot of problems across Minnesota. And a lot of the schools were pulling, um, their S R O's out of the schools. So, uh, that was a fix that we were able to make. Um, there's also some ministry costs needed to the cannabis bill. Unfortunately, that still needs a lot of work. I don't think, um, either, either side is completely happy with where that's going. Uh, another thing moving forward in this will affect, uh, everyone from small businesses to our school districts is the pay journal leave, which was passed in twenty twenty-three, um, that is to go back to twenty twenty-six. And, um, they did find out, you know, when originally passed, they had estimated a point seven percent payroll tax on that. And after the studies came back, um, it was significantly more. So just that was like an eight hundred million dollar, um, increase, which was not funded before that. Um, moving forward, I would say schools, I'm, I am on that education finance committee. And, um, I am very, very concerned as we have piled into our school systems a huge amount of funding, um, which I'm not against, um, funding our schools. I would like our schools to be funded. Uh, however, tied to that funding was also sixty-five new mandates for our schools. Uh, and so it was very deceptive because the public, you maybe saw the headlines in twenty twenty-three and then said record funding to our public schools. And then fast forward one year and where did you see a lot of headlines across this area? You know, teachers not settling the contracts, um, that we're looking, a lot of school districts are looking to, uh, raise a levy, that type of thing. And so you have to ask yourself, well, how can that happen? How can, how can both of those be true? How can in twenty twenty-three, we could, as the state of Minnesota, pass record funding, right? Because that was, that was the, that was the headlines. And then we fast forward one year and we're looking at schools with significant deficits. Uh, and so that's very, very problematic. And, you know, to me, that's something that we have to go back to local control. You know, we have to trust our administrators, our store boards, the people that are elected in our areas. Uh, and it's very concerning because when people in the fall are blanket making these mandates, what you need here in Wauwashaw is very, very different from what, you know, people need in Redley, from what people need with you, from what people need Minneapolis. And so it really is just taking away from, you know, that, that local, that local control. Um, and then also I just think it's really important that we are aware, you know, as you are a city, I T D, and you have to, you have to fund things and you understand finances. Uh, that in the state of Minnesota, whether you're seeing it in the news or not, um, we really have right now a problem with fraud, waste and abuse. And you can simply Google, so we are feeding our future fraud, was two hundred fifty million dollars. Minnesota had the biggest fraud in the nation from COVID, two hundred fifty million dollars. Um, that in two thousand eighteen, we had over a hundred million, that was a childcare fraud. Um, and then just recently in the news, so again, if you're not seeing this, I challenge you to look at it because this is very problematic. You know, Minnesota, we don't have a problem with how these funds, we have an oversight problem of where those funds are going. Um, so, you know, I challenge you to Google, there's frontline worker, uh, bonus pay program. That was just added by the legislative auditor. Is anyone aware of this? Five hundred million dollars, two hundred million of it is not accounted for. That's forty percent. Forty percent of five hundred million is, is literally missing or potentially did not go to the frontline workers, the people that that money was intended to. And so again, this is just really something that we need to know because it is important for you as a city to know financially, that even though it looked like Minnesota was flashing the fines the last couple of years, that moving forward, we are, we are looking at her as a city, we need to be very, very careful with our funding. And unfortunately, if we get to that deficit situation, it comes back to cutbacks, cutting back in areas of this and areas of the schools or that type of thing that could affect you globally. Um, so those are some other concerns and, um, I do wanna talk a little bit about bonding. You know, I know we have that project here and it was really a disappointment. This was a bonding year. And last year, the bonding bill went, the, in twenty twenty-three, the bonding bill went through, which was not a typical year, uh, that was kind of made up for the year before. Um, but it was very disappointing and I do want to say thank you, you know, to all of you that worked very hard for that project. Um, it was disappointing to see that we, we never came to the table. The, the Democrats and the Republicans' leadership never came together to discuss bonding. And if you wanna say, not in a, not in a, um, in a realistic form, um. So if you wanna ask why, it truly was because the Democrats have one party control. They have the governor, they have the senate, they have the house. And so they set the agenda, they, they can do whatever they want right now in Minnesota. It's very unchecked. It's, it's, it's very unbalanced in the state of Minnesota right now. And what was unfortunate, that sitting down at the table to discuss bonding bill, which is infrastructure projects for our, um, municipalities, where we need the funding to go, is they would have needed to compromise on something. That's really what it comes down to. Because on the bonding bill, it would have needed eleven, um, votes on the Republicans to vote for it, which we would have. But there, in, you know, in government, usually there is a little, a little give and take. There usually is a little bit win-win situation. And I think most people believe that's happening. That's not happening in St. Paul right now. That's not happening in the state of Minnesota right now. We have truly lost checks and balances. And so when it came down to the end, there was never a serious conversation that happened in the state of Minnesota this year between the Democrat party and the Republican party about bonding because they were not willing to make any compromises on anything. And what do I mean about that? You know, I support bonding, um, my husband and I, we own a lot of properties. I'm a homeowner, so it's mostly private yard. Um, and you understand that when you have a property that's worth something, you need to take care of it. And you need to, you need to put the money, you, you need to put the money there, otherwise on your own, when you don't put a thirteen thousand dollar roof, potentially you're gonna have forty thousand dollars to deal with some of that, right? You know, that's, that's just... So I believe very strongly that as the state of Minnesota, that we need to be, uh, funding our infrastructure, taking care of our roads, our bridges and infrastructure that the state of Minnesota owns. Um, what I do not agree with is funding nonprofits. And in twenty twenty-three, the bonding bill that was passed by the Democrats had over a hundred eighty million dollars for nonprofits. In twenty twenty-three, the state of Minnesota gave one point one billion dollars to nonprofits, who mostly are not being audited and are not being monitored and hence the fraud. So that's why it's disappointing because this is, this was a really good road project. This was a project, I always said, like, we need to talk about it not locally, not that this is a Wauwashaw project, but this was a state of Minnesota project. Because it truly benefits the state of Minnesota to have this done as this is one of the only accesses coming from, uh, Wisconsin to Minnesota. So it was very disappointing to not have some serious conversations. And then I just wanna end with, um, a couple of good things, but, you know, being in the minority, I would say, um, again, well, and who I started, this was a historic term. And if you talk to people that have been there for five years, ten years, twenty years, Democrat, Republican, almost everyone will tell you that they've never seen anything like this. That they've never seen this one party control that is refusing to work with both sides. Uh, but what I was proud of was that, um, either being a minority, um, I worked really well with other people, that, um, I was able to get into a couple of the bills. Um, these are very, very normal bills, but it was things that people in the district wanted. So like the, the tractor implementation law was something that I talked to the chief county sheriff and they needed to get it changed and I did. Um, and then there was, there was two other things that I was able to get in. Another great thing was the EMS, and I know I've talked to many of you about that, but our funding, we estimated, we needed about a hundred twenty million dollars for our EMS. And we were able to get thirty, you know, way short of what we, what we really, really need. And the EMS is, is really a problem that was created by the government. Um, and now you are suffering locally, you know, trying to deal with that, with that problem. Um, so I just wanna make you all, you know, for the time that you've been in Wauwashaw, the time that it's serving, um, you know, I know this is a labor of love for many of you. You do it for the city and, um, it shows, you know, uh, Wauwashaw is just really a great city. I was in Lake City over last weekend when they had their Y R C days and, um, even, you know, chatting to some of the, the, the people over there that are in the city council. And they were actually referring to you about, you know, how Wauwashaw has the Eagle Center and draws the visitors. And they, and they were saying like, you know, we need to get more like that, have a spot on that to stop. Um, and so, um, you are well respected and you do a great job on your city. It's very impressive, um. It's been an honor to work with you and, you know, I was disappointed that we couldn't, uh, get that bonding bill through. Um, but I do hope moving forward, um, if there's two words, it's balance and accountability in Minnesota, is we have to go back to sitting down together and talking and forming win-win situations in the state of Minnesota and, and, uh, what we saw happen this last session. Um, my number is on the bottom of that. It's, um, my personal cell phone is on that. And, um, I am running for reelection this year, but if you are in need of anything, um, I, it's very important to me. Everyone in my district is very important to me. Um, thank you, you know, to the police. This last few years has been very difficult, um, you know, for our law enforcement. And that's, that's one thing that I hope we can continue to work on and improve, um, at the state level. As the state, about one thousand, um, one thou- one thousand law enforcement across the state. Was there a question?
No, background.
I didn't have any other questions. Does anyone have a specific question?
We were at the meeting of Minnesota Cities Conference last week and Governor Walz spoke and he hinted at having a special legislative session this summer and for flood relief and possibly a bonding bill. You heard anything?
I, I heard exactly that, what you just said, that there was a rumor that that might happen. Um, I had not heard any more than that, but with all of the, the start flooding mess happened, especially for Biden here and that district, which you've all seen, the dam and everything, there's, there's a very deal of the average that's happening. Across the state, so. But yeah, that's the first, you know, I heard about that they might sink the bonding bill into that, so.
Any other questions for Representative Altona? All right. Thanks for visiting with us. Thanks for the time at the Capitol. And don't forget about our project. We, we aren't giving up on it. Uh, it's underwater as we speak, so. Yeah, I'm sure you couldn't get in the usual way to Wauwashaw. We wanna solve that problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and just a quick announcement, we've got two full packets of the agenda. One is near Rob and one's up there if anyone wants a packet. Thank you. Roland, did you want a packet there? Okay.
All right. Uh, with that, I'll invite public comment. And then we have at least two people who wanna make public comment. Mr. Carl's, you're first on the list. If you just wanna join us at the podium and state your name and residence for the record and just share with us what you'd like to share. And, uh, we try to keep these comments for about three or three minutes if we can, just to make time.
I'm Andrew Charles, twenty-one fifty West Rand, Golden River. And I'm here basically, uh, behalf of my mother, my wife, to uphold the change in, you know, the zoning on the property mixers, starting the barge removals. Um, the location of the move is the old track, right, that I'm on the ground. I would do your best. So that's, basically that's what the name of this. It's probably gonna be in respect to, you know, who else away from it. And dirt noise. I've heard of a hundred loads going out a day, that's a hundred trucks coming back, that's two hundred trucks, that's a truck every two and a half minutes. And the quality of life is just gonna go down the trailer. Um, that leads into the fact of property devaluation. You should gonna be able to sell a house. I already got one example for you. My mother had somebody in the background for quite some time. And has, they had interest in the property, house particular, that they all live in, got them, come back here and repaid it. Since finding this out, they had no interest in. So I think that's just a sign of things to come. Um, I talked to Sean over here. I'm down there with him, just asking if he could tweak a little bit around this bottom, this furnace down there. I haven't seen anything back again, so I hope where he stands on that. Um, other than that, the only, I don't know, my God, other than that, I think, uh, engineering company guy, I was here at a meeting, it was four thirty, they must have given a presentation. And they were concerned about, the, right, it was on fifth grant, they were concerned about the canoeers in the backwaters. And they were concerned about how it's at, the weather. But when she got done with her presentation, she asked her comments and I said, well, obviously I said, what about the person that's living a hundred and fifty feet from the road you want to put it there? And I got the most dumb phone and surprised look I've ever seen in my life. And it was silence for probably ten seconds. Nice. It's all I hear is comments and I never got an answer. And I, just reading your, um, agenda tonight, went into the attachments and I see down there, there's a report from the engineer. And it's got an, uh, surrounding property. And it's got the north is the river, the south is Bradmore, to east and west was all agriculture. I just, they don't know that there's two people even living in there, or two households. So I kinda, it kinda makes a person feel like, you're not even there, if you know what I'm talking about. So at that, I guess I'm gonna pull my comments until everybody at the mission is permitted.
Sounds good, yeah. I, I'm, I'm thinking that's a zoning reference, just so you understand, it's not a pejorative, it's a, it's owned that way, that it references the zoning.
All right.
I don't think that's good.
No one's gonna be helping.
Okay.
So, you know. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time as well. Kay, hey, I see you peeking up behind the podium. Yeah, that's a, that's a spot I can't see, so.
Hey guys, I'm Kay Kay, I'm in Fourth Street East. And I'm here to say thank you. Um, on Sunday, when I was in Madison, the, uh, notice came through that we're in a state of emergency, like, and I'm a little bit newer to town, I have no idea of it. And then I realized it's so impactful that we did that. And then asking people, thank you for the extra hours and the extra time because that'll give us some bandwidth to be able to go back to the state. As someone that isn't even part of government, but is just a part of the community, thank you for doing that. And I ask that I, if there, you have not heard any of this, but this is a time and each of you have to bond together. So I'm asking if there's any finger pointing for anything going on regarding the flooding or other things that you start with the question, what do we believe that we agree on and how might we? So just in terms of a community, thank you and keep working together. And just so that you know, um, this community doesn't get much funding from the, the state in terms of nonprofit. I ran one of the nonprofits, we increased it thirty percent. It's because we work with the community, the community funds, funds the community. So please bring this project together because it's really about getting people that are working, helping. Yes, it's about highways, but it's a much deeper.
Well, make sure we get credit where credit is due. I don't know if you know Riley Castello sitting behind you, Kay. He's our, he's our assistant public works director and our emergency manager, so he's doing a great job with Tony and everybody else. Um, so the thanks is well deserved to our, our full public works crew. Um, I'm sure Pat hasn't gotten a lot of sleep in the last few weeks.
Yes, thank you.
So we really appreciate them as well. Any other public comments? Anybody online that should make comment? If you'd like to and you haven't before, I think, I think the most.
Yeah.
Is witness or there? If you'd like to make comment, just turn on your microphone, you don't have to turn on your video and just share with us your thoughts. Okay, hearing none. Do you have any changes or additions to the agenda by staff or council?
Did you pull number one? Just got a couple of questions about.
You bet. Consent one?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, where should we put that? General Business Four, huh? That work. Are you Jessica?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll pull that one. Otherwise, we'll leave it as is. I have similar sentiments as Kay. I'm so appreciative of this community. It's hard. I think what happens is a lot of people having lived here even just ten, ten short years, it's, this has happened. This, this level of flooding has happened multiple times and we see the effort of our public works team and our law enforcement and the closures of highways and the impact. I started to think if the water comes over the roadway again, on the way to the hospital, that makes everybody very uncomfortable. So we'll hope to see this, um, taper soon. But nevertheless, there's still a lot of great things happening. Um, the trees, I've, I've got so many citizen comments and emails and, and just hate, I gotta mention you, thank you so much for all those trees. Caroline will say a little bit more about that project wrapping up, but it's very noticed. Um, the library programs are non-stop this time of year. It's like, I can't even get to them. There's so many good things happening. Um, and then also the continued appreciation for the athletic field. And I've been here several times again for ballgames and it's just to see people here at all hours, just little kids staying to play pickleball after their, after their baseball games. Their parents are probably like, let's go. But it has been just wonderful. And again, so many comments, appreciating that that got done, both from our community members and neighboring communities who are so proud for us. Alma was really happy that we were able to take their tournament on or some of their tournament on, really appreciated that we weren't also flooded out, so. So, so many good things. I'm so glad it's done. Um, the fire hall looks great, the streets, you know, the progress is being made. I don't know if you'll have anything to say about where they're at, but I think, um, despite terrible water situation here, there's progress every day. I can see different heaps of earth shifting positions on my intersection. Um, and then the Bird City banners look beautiful. If you don't go down Main Street very often, they just are so spectacular. That was a collaboration between Main Street, Bird City, city staff and Minnesota Autobahn. They're beautiful. Um, Fourth of July is coming up. I don't know, do you wanna make an announcement about, have they solidified?
Yeah, um.
Made out of weather?
Be, uh, based, or contingent on the weather, I think we have decided we found a spot at the athletic field. Um, so you won't be able to park at the athletic field. It's flooded anyway, so. But, uh, more or less same spot as always. Um, you know, I think, yeah, the grocery store will be closed, so there's parking there and wherever you can find a spot, so. That's the plan unless we get rained out and then we'll announce a contingency date.
Okay, so lots of good things happening, though it's a wet summer. And that's all I have. Does anybody else have any, uh, community related? There's so much going on, community related updates. I don't, I wanna give Jeff a chance to talk about the L M C. I don't know if you wanna pause for that when you give your, John had a chance during port. Anyway, there's been a lot. Um, and thanks to Rob and Ben for being here for their, for their, um, anniversary. Sometimes people can't be here, so we appreciate your time too. All right, with that, I'll go to Utilities. Did have a kind of a general business meeting.
Yeah, nothing, nothing worth mentioning, no.
And no parking street updates, um, significant updates. Port Authority, I missed the last Port Authority.
Port Authority, that, uh, Tuesday, the eighteenth of June, um, under new business resolution to approve purchase agreement for the car's property for the barge terminal. Contingent on several items, continuing to, you know, approval of the E I S and all those different things are part of that, resulting, all those things are making contingent. Um, we also need to have that purchase agreement in place in order to start to, when we get to that point, activate, activate bonding funds and that kind of thing. Um. We talked about, um, surveying land that city, that maybe could be considered for infill build sites. Infill build sites, so those are for like, single family residential, that kind of stuff. A couple of, for Trip, um, has come to the table, expressing, expressing interest to be a partner in maybe the potential of working with us and the Highway sixty, we wrote, um, relocating, expanding, will those, if they have an interest there. Um, and, and I don't know if you're gonna talk about the Ted Grant.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, um. Talking with the, our city coordinator, so she's the one that keeps track of, kind of those projects that we have going on. We continue to reevaluate her goals and projects to make sure that she's feeling that she's getting the direction and working results for us as well. Um, do you wanna talk about the E I S? Is there, or we wanna wait for like next month? We did, go ahead.
Yeah, we're just, we just, we are, um, challenged to keep moving the barge terminal project forward due to the ongoing comments from the D N R and, um, fish and wildlife. So we're gonna be strategizing on. Fish and wildlife, so we're gonna be strategizing on how to respond again. But because of the fact that we're now rezoning the entire site, the entire twenty-three acres to industrial. While we're only planning to develop eight acres, they've taken note of that and are now. Questioning what are potentially the future intentions of the coners for the balance of that property and should that be considered and. So we're, we're gonna be arguing that the coners have no plans for development of that property and to allow ours. Our EIS to continue to move forward, but we are. In ongoing discussions and that is stalling the project, so, um, that's kind of where, where we're at is continue to. Figure out a path forward with the environmental impact statement, so.
It's all good.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot. Uh, let's see, definitely, anything from animals you want to stumble, Emes, guys, right?
Um, we didn't meet the next mission this month, um, our two new hires are gonna. Start the eleventh and sixteenth, and Austin already started. Uh, we're getting a hundred and forty-seven calls, that's up a hundred and fifty-two calls over last year. Uh, sixty-two nine-one-one calls over last year, um, currently have days to go with eight ninety-four for the year. Um, which would put us at a twenty-seven percent increase over last year. Um, and then as far as the. Uh, RFP goes ahead, five firms express interest and I only have one that has said that they're not interested in. Um, swimming a bit, so those are due July tenth. So, um, we should have a good number of bids selected for that.
Okay. So, thank you. Planning Commission.
Uh, we approved a C P for accessory garage on Skyline and then we rezoned. Uh, approved the rezoning of fifth grant and miss lane is only, or it's, we cleaned out a few things, so. They're both on the consent agenda.
Good, good. All right, uh, uh, this is not an HPC update, oh yeah, Tony, come on.
Oh, that was pretty clear, but I have one thing, so, um, we're going to say, you know, the paving group. Wants to finish Main Street next week, so we're gonna be advertising, they'll park it down on Main Street, which is. Gonna be great, but, um, they gotta start. On Monday, we're gonna be advertised and actually through the weekend, probably days this week, I'll send some notes out and then, uh, they gotta do some billing, they gotta raise candles. Water valves and everything, and then the paving crew is, I think, Thursday and Friday, if I remember right. We're trying to get them like a Monday and Tuesday, because the businesses are really open on Thursday, Friday, but. If we say no, come back later, we don't want it to come back, so we want to get that done and stripping. Um, and then they are gonna pay, if they have time, they're gonna do some bridge out and wear the new curb as well. Which may help the parade or also we're still in limbo on that.
We've been just having a lift on before those festivities, really, it makes me feel better. And I guess Riley, you've given such a nice written report, do you have anything else for us that you wanted to? Council on. Sounds good, sounds good, all right, um. But with that, I was just gonna say, HPC, you know, is very dedicated, there's a few people I think been on since the beginning of time. On the here, the commission, but rarely do we actually get to do preservation work, it's usually signage stuff, which is important to the sort of aesthetic of the district, but. There is a new business going into a Pembroke property and they're gonna have to make some significant improvements to the building and that just is so. Exciting to see people wanting to invest in those properties because they don't, you know, they don't preserve themselves, so. More to come there, but it was sort of like, wow, a real, a real sort of significant design review is coming our way, probably next season. All right, with that, Karen.
Okay, well, um, I think we want to start out with our work anniversaries, so, uh. Joe, then I, yes, we'll have. Rob, do you want to step forward first?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, so I've got, I've got two officers here that we're gonna recognize ten years of service to. Um, and before I do that, I, I wanted to throw my thanks out to you guys in the city because this is, um. We're moving in such a good direction, I think there's chief before me that would have loved to have been up here, uh, with this and I, you know, this is. This is a new thing for us to, to have a department full of veteran guys, like I was saying, it's. It's tough times for us and even when there was an abundance of officers, we were not in a situation where we were. Introducing guys that, that were here and a part of this community for so long, um, and it's, it's just. It shows the work that you're guys done, that now that we are in a crisis, you know, having a department full of, uh, dedicated officers that are putting, um. Their career in Wabashaw, you know, first, so. Um. I had a scratch, my head didn't find anything positive. Um, but yeah, we're recognizing his, uh, ten years with us, um. He had worked for, uh, some time also with Plainview before here, uh, at that time he was also working as a teacher, um, which. Ended up, uh, working very well for the city here because, uh, starting back in two thousand eighteen. Uh, he became our school liaison officer, always a spot that has been, uh, historically. Difficult, um, but he's done such a good job with, uh, you know, uh, meshing our work with, with the staff at the school. Uh, just excels in his role there, um, and honestly, I don't know that we could. He's very, he's very comfortable place, uh, puts in a lot of time besides his forty hours a week. Um, you know, his phone ringing a lot and he's, he's doing, um, a lot of extra work and it's just been a perfect match. Um, for that role, uh, he's also our, um, background guy, he does all the backgrounds for our hires, uh, other hires in the city. Uh, the county likes to use his, uh, abilities, um, to do that and he's just, uh, he's, he's excelled at that. His role on, as a patrol officer in the school and, uh, who's just been a dedicated employee to our city, so congratulations on your tenure, Rob.
I responded to Rob, thank Rob, I have to thank him for the background check that I have this job. Okay, that is all the work he does and helps us out so often to be a leader in our community, that's been just as down with me as well, congratulations.
Uh, next man up is Officer Benny Swanson, um. He's worked all but a few months of his career, uh, right here in Wabashaw. Um, and did spend some time with the county and then, uh, realized that this is where he should be. Ben, Ben has a couple of real significant roles for us, uh, one being that he is our firearms instructor, so he works with not only our department but surrounding departments. Uh, it's a, it's an extremely, and obviously an extremely important, uh, role, which, uh, requires him to look at concentrating, he, he's. Always working and critiquing, um, all of our guys in surrounding departments to, uh, become, you know. Better with their abilities, um, uh, and arrange, throws us through so many different scenarios. Um, and does an awesome job with, with that, he's also an evidence tech for us, so the stuff coming in, uh, bad handles, make sure it gets the right places. Gets things to the BCA, um, obviously, uh, you know, the preservation of evidence is just an extremely important role there. And as part of his dedication to us too, um, and we're, we're kind of unique from other departments where we can run. Uh, throughout a year with very little to, no overtime to very little and part of it is rules that he takes on as well, but you know. Uh, float officer, and this was something he had done, not young, but when the chance for when this came later on. Um, and, and that requires him to. Have a lot of last, last second changes and stuff to his, his schedule and he's, has, you know, he. He takes that role and does very well with it, keeps us from, uh, you know, going shorthanded and, and again, it's, it's a little bit more of a challenging shift, but, uh. He's got it, took it on course, so, um, congratulations, Ben Swanson on your ten years.
You gonna talk about Heidi, let's just not.
Heidi's been with us for twenty-five years.
Wow.
Um. And her role, I, just the day-to-day function of that department, um. We rely, I rely on Heidi with. A lot of stuff, I, I joke that I don't know why you take more orders from, whether it be her or her mother wife at home that you run that, but. Um. Yeah, she's the first person, if you come to the window, that's the first face you're gonna see, um, she's taking our calls and, and getting them into the system, um. Back and forth with attorneys, give right, um, uh, the records to them, citations to them, um. Uh, reports, she's, she's part of. Ordering everything from the department, submitting bills, uh, reimbursements, uh, keeping up with the changes that are constantly coming to us through the states, hey, she's, she's up. She's up on that and, and she writes me to make sure that that's, uh, everything's smooth there, she know, she's a, she's a master of craft and we couldn't operate on a day-to-day basis with our, um. Suppose Tony except term one, but congratulations to Heidi for twenty-five.
Well, thanks to your leadership, Joe, I don't think that, uh, these ten years would be happening without your important and. Great leadership as well, so we're really happy about those anniversaries and it's nice to.
Thanks, yeah, you don't need to say.
I stayed out of my first one.
Oh, you're kidding? I love it.
All right, bye, thank you.
And then we'll let Caroline carry on the third minister.
Yeah, just, um. We got a sixteen thousand grand to do a phase two report on the. Former grandpa's barn and parking lot site, we did discover that there is potential contamination there. Um, League of Minnesota Cities Conference, we went and attended and I think I walked away with some information about just legislative changes, um, potential grants we can tap into. We did a lot of networking, um, and then we also learned that we, in our opinion, are ahead of the curve. Um, because John attended a session on. Money out there and if, if there's money out there, we've tapped it, we've looked at it, so unfortunately he didn't. Learn anything new, there's no magic money treaties that we didn't know about out there, but it was helpful that all the different, uh, things like a franchise fee we, we've done. Do you guys want to add anything about the conference, um, that was last week?
Yeah, I think, I think it was kind of interesting just talking to others, people from other cities, seeing, you know, we think we might have, we have a whole new problem, but. A lot of these other cities all have the same exact problems.
Yeah, so, um. And then I'm gonna be working on a response to the Army Corps for our tipping fee and we'll be bringing that, um, for approval. But I think at this time, we won't be able to do island unloads until twenty twenty-six and will plan on doing trucking in twenty twenty-five, just kind of where we're at with the bill project. Process with the new barge terminal and then Lisa and I have been working on an anti-discrimination plan as part of the mayor ad grant. Um, and then, yeah, I'm investigating just ongoing potential grant opportunities for the highway sixty project since we didn't get our bonding request. Um, it looks like preliminarily the one we thought we could qualify for, may, we might not qualify for, but, um, just continuing to explore that. Um, and then we, sorry, I had a typo on that, but one of the things on the parks board that never got discussed is. I would just love a community member that could help maybe write some smaller grants for potential slaves to go here at Biosinkert Park, I put it at Beach Park, um. We, we just need, need help for people interested in playgrounds or rec equipment to kind of help us with grant writing, so.
Are you finding grants that, for that, where that's available expense, because we struggle with that?
Yeah, I know, just, um, typical ones that, that we've gone after, small grants, yeah, yeah. Hey, that's it.
Okay, so then off of our consent agenda is item one, otherwise we have the first read on the property rezon for fifteen oh one and sixteen hundred fifth grant. Resolution to decertify the PEP manufacturing tip district, the first read for, uh, use chart changes for zoning ordinances, um, the twenty twenty-three project payout number nine, athletic complex payout number seven. Our June fourth regular council minutes, the July warrants and the St. Felix gambling application, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I saw a little circle.
We have a first from Tim, a second from Jeff, and you give a discussion. All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed, same side. All right, and then no public hearing, so general business one, uh, is the resolutions on the street project, is that Brian gonna give us a little, Brian's online, he's gonna. Present on this one, hi Brian.
Hi folks, um, I'll just give a little background on this for review, so this is for the twenty twenty-four street improvement project. Uh, this project was initiated back in April at your April second council meeting. Where the council both ordered and received a feasibility report for the project that described the improvements and the estimated cost. Um, at that meeting, they also, uh, you authorized a, a hearing on the improvement, that improvement hearing, uh, was, uh, noticed in the newspaper and mailed notice of that hearing was sent out. To property owners affected by the improvement. At your May seventh meeting, you held the improvement hearing and took comments on the improvement and then you passed a resolution ordering. The improvement and preparation of plans and specifications. Following that, we prepared plans and specifications and, uh, at your, uh, June meeting, you passed a resolution approving those plans and specs and ordering. The advertisement for bids. Uh, subsequent to that, we advertised for bids and actually took bids on the project, uh, this morning. Uh, we received, uh, one bid for the project from Rochester Sand and Gravel. Uh, the bid was in the amount of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars, which was very close to the estimated cost. Of the improvement for construction that was included in the feasibility report. So the next action that is required to proceed with the project would be. Uh, passing the two resolutions that were included in your, in your packet, uh, for tonight. Uh, the first resolution is declaring the cost to be assessed and ordering preparation of the assessment role for the project. Uh, that resolution includes some dollar figures, uh, stating that the. Estimated cost of construction for the project is two hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars, which is the amount of the low bid. And other expenses for engineering and administration are sixty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars for the. Total project cost of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents. So by passing that resolution, uh, you would, uh, uh, declare those costs to be assessed. Uh, the amount of the assessments that would be assessed to benefiting properties total. Forty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy cents, which means the city cost would be two hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and ten dollars and eighty cents. Uh, that resolution also establishes the period over which the assessments would be, uh, laid over and the, uh, interest rate, uh, for those assessments, which. Counsel, you would have the discretion of setting those numbers, the resolution includes a period of ten years and an interest rate of three point seven five percent. Which is the same, uh, uh, period and rate that you used for the last, uh, street improvement mill and overlay project that you did in twenty nineteen. So by passing the resolution, you would, um, set those dollar figures and those percentages. Uh, the next resolution, uh, that's in your packet would be. A resolution setting the date for the assessment hearing, which would be at six PM on August sixth at your council meeting. Uh, where you would receive comments on the proposed assessments. Prior to that hearing, we would send out a mailed notice of the assessment hearing to all the properties proposed to be assessed, which would include. Their individual assessments and all the information about how the assessments are paid and, and the interest rate and the period and all those types of things. And also their ability to speak at the assessment hearing. So that's the second resolution, um, and like I said, that, that hearing would happen at your August sixth meeting. Um, if you, uh, adopt the assessment role at that time, uh, then you would take the step of also awarding the construction contract and the contractor would. Then begins construction after that. Uh, also in your packet, uh, we did include, uh, an updated preliminary assessment role now, that includes the. Assessments based on the bids, uh, which actually are exactly the same as the assessments that were in the, uh, feasibility report, so nothing changed there. uh, feasibility report. So nothing changed there because the cost was very close uh, to what was in the uh, feasibility report. We did make some updates and confirm that there are several properties. Uh, I believe there are seven. Yeah, seven properties uh, on the project that were previously assessed as either the a part of the twenty twelve project or the twenty nineteen project and based on your local improvement policy, those uh, properties would receive zero assessment for this project because that's within the period of time that you uh, your policy says you won't assess them again for another improvement project. So with all of that, I think uh, that's the action that's in front of you tonight is to consider passing those two resolutions. Um, as they they are presented. Uh, unless you would uh, choose to modify the the period and the interest rate for the assessment in that uh, first resolution. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks for laying that out so clearly, Brian. Any questions for Brian? Okay, hearing none, just for the public's knowledge, if you weren't at the other meetings where this was addressed, it's Market Street West between Allegheny and Third Street East. Franklin Avenue between Market Street West and Second Street East. And Jefferson Avenue between Market Street West and Third Street East. And these are street improvements, not total street reconstruction like we're living through right now. So just because I think that was maybe not so clear last time. All right, with that, do we have a motion to uh, approve the resolution declaring cost to be assessed, ordering preparation proposed assessment? We were first by John, a second by Tim. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. And we'd also entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the hearing, which would be as Brian stood our next city council meeting, August sixth. On the proposed assessment. We have a motion from Brian, a second from Jean. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Thank you, Brian. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, uh, general business two is our resolution declaring an emergency. I made the proclamation on Saturday. So have before us the resolution, we'll get some updates from Riley about where we stand.
We just pull up the power point. I thought it was. I almost. Okay, he just had a different. All right.
Okay, um, so I wanted to give you guys an update on what we've got.
Okay, yeah, I just, I'm gonna share my screen. This side?
No, you can go on. Okay, so we crested yesterday at fifteen point one eight feet and within a week, we're supposed to go down to twelve eight. Um, next slide. Um, they offered this at the National Weather Service. So what it does, the purple line is a prediction that's on with a model showing rain for the next seven to sixteen days, but it's also adjusted by the um, forecasters there. And then the blue is the six-day outlook for rain and the green is the sixteen days. So even with all the rain, um, we're not going up again higher is what we're saying. Uh, park closures, we had to close five of our parks in total and two streets. And under uh, highway sixty was closed as well. Uh, we were lucky, we have a lot of data to go back off of. Um, we just had a vote last year, so we knew what we were doing. We got all the picnic tables up. They didn't vote away. Um, gunner can't grow shut down as well. So we just followed that list. So moving forward, uh, we're going to start opening stuff back up. The first things will be the streets. That'll be our first priority, then campgrounds, then parks. Uh, so hopefully we can get back to somewhat of a normal summer for the rest of the year. And then the big news is this is not typical, but we have our Washington Colony has already been accepted for federal assistance. Usually they have to do uh, a damage report before we get approved, but we've already been approved and I think they went off of the data from last year. And so how it works is as a state, you have to hit ten point five million to be considered. Um, and then if Wabash County can prove ninety-eight thousand, then uh, federal seven. And that's when we get a hundred percent coverage for our projects. Um, if that doesn't happen, the next step will be state and they cover seventy-five percent and we would cover the other twenty-five percent. Anyone have any questions?
So when data are we looking at for cost this year?
Yeah. Yeah, because that includes the whole colony. Yeah, last year, I think we submitted four hundred and forty thousand right away. Some of what we received, but yeah.
Thanks very much. It's great that you're using your informations wisely and the presentation is great. I I when I had legislators reach out like like Representative Alton Dorf, I kind of want to just send him that. If that's okay with you in the future, I'll just say this is our report from our emergency management team. I didn't have it on my phone, but it's a great resource. Yeah, yeah. And also that the the emergency management logo, you know, a little simple thing like that, it makes the visibility of that item so it's so visible. And so I think that's a great addition to have. Um, because our news get in our news page and our Facebook page gets busy like everybody else has, but to have that logo really called attention to it, so it's also appreciated. Thank you. So we have a resolution before us to declare an emergency. We have a motion to approve that resolution. But a second by Jean. Any further discussion?
Uh, do we need to have an end point on it? It seems like you're leaving it open-ended like this. Couldn't we just say like till the next regular council meeting or something?
Yeah, if we think we'll be there, sure. I don't know. What's the impact on that for you, Riley?
That has to be more um, asked for us to receive anything.
But what about the period of the period of the duration of the emergency? So yeah, so we'll say that'll be the that'll be the duration.
Thirty days.
Okay, with that, um, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, same sign. Yeah. Good to be ahead of this stuff. All right, and then we moved, um, oh, we have the Greenfield Township ambulance request. So we have a nice uh, financial calculation that Tyler was able to work on. Tyler, did you want to present this to us? This looks at for some different scenarios for levy and the Greenfield in as it relates to their ambulance contribution.
Yeah, so Greenfield Township ambulance contribution with two different um, scenarios. One assumes that Greenfield has a zero percent levy increase and only takes on the ambulance request um, with the city of seven thousand in twenty twenty-five and thirty-nine thousand uh, eight thirty-eight in twenty twenty-six. And then our second, almost never, was that a Greenfield does a five percent increase on their own. Plus our requested contributions, uh, um, which is zero percent levy increase and our contribution, their twenty twenty-five. Um, we did a two two hundred thousand dollar home, I would say uh, what a five dollar thirty-eight cent increase in twenty twenty-five and just under twenty-two dollars in twenty twenty-six. Uh, Greenfield did twenty-five percent and then we did a contribution, it would be about thirteen thirty-two in twenty-five and about twenty-eight dollars in twenty-six. So this kind of gives an idea of, um, if we do get the requests that we're asking for, what it would look like for.
Very useful. And did Greenfield participate? Have they kind of seen this and? Okay, so it's just for our our purposes as we reach out to them.
I kind of have an update on that. Um, I did reach out to the town clerk today and I spoke with Mike Wabi, as did Brian Woodley. And, um, it looks like in this year, twenty twenty-four, they levied for six thousand, but hope to pay us ten thousand. Uh, again, our request is thirty-nine thousand um, out of savings that they have. And they, we didn't yet share this new information because we just came up with it in the last um, month. But I did mention on the phone, we're looking at, you know, a twenty to twenty-eight dollar total increase in somebody's annual taxes and he felt that that information would be very compelling for people. Um, it does represent a fifteen percent levy increase, but because you know, I think we were all shocked at how how low the taxes are. Um, Tyler discovered that their uh, total assessed value is about equal to the city of Wabashas, but they only levy, you know, two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. So um, in talking to Tom on the phone, they recognized that they haven't been at the table. Um, he feels that that they could get there in twenty twenty-five. Um, he also encouraged there's gonna be a vacancy on the township board, a couple vacancies, and so the deadline to um, get on the green to file on the Greenfield Township Board is August twelfth. Um, you would want to call ahead of time because they're not open all the time. So I think one responses of you know, to encourage all the to to run for the township. Um, and then he, the the clerk said, armed with information, they can, they can get there, but some of the comments was quote, we want to see progress. So a little bit questioning if there is this what they call hole in the budget. Why have we, why are we investing in the ambulance if there's this hole? And I think with Brian has done multiple presentations. But if they would attend meetings or get involved, we we can explain. It's not this hole. We're paying for services and we have for sure, that's what John and I learned at the presentation. We are like leaps and bounds ahead of everyone else in the in in the state in terms of our creative thinking around ambulance service. Again, thanks to Ryan, he sits on these boards. So we have a lot to, I think, brag about, but it does create some explaining of why investing in the ambulance can turn additional profits and and has. Um, and so there is just a little bit of maybe ongoing discussion. If there's a big hole, why should they get involved? And, you know, so that's the feedback that I got, that I was they they understand the council's position. So he shared what you guys shared at the meeting that he was at. And Tom, the clerk, is interested in attending ambulance commission meetings himself. So that's that's good. Um, it's he, we understand that it's a service that can't go away. We are committed to getting there. So we would like to participate more. So that was one person's perspective, but I do think this upcoming election is important. And, um, I I don't know, we represent the city of Wabashaw, but, um,
But it's a partnership model, so.
Yeah, yeah, so. Brian?
Um, Caroline had several conversations about how to approach this, and I think ultimately we settled on that. We need to educate. Um, we've already educated the board and they've done what what they've done thus far, but I think if you have an opportunity to talk to someone from Greenfield Township, just working in the conversation, the more people that know um, how we're struggling. I mean, I I gotta believe that there are taxpayers in Wabash who utilize the food shelf that are paying for ambulance for Greenfield Township and I I'd be embarrassed if that was in my situation, so. Um, I just want to get that information out and uh, maybe we can encourage someone to run that would be an advocate for us, so. Um, whoever you know, go ahead and encourage him to run.
In terms of educating folks, I'm wondering if he can take on an active role. And, you know, I'm thinking about the county's doing this uh, age-friendly initiative and kind of deliberately going out to different community groups when it came to this council. So I don't know if there's a, if we should be thinking about that offline, just like some groups that that we can each individual reach out to, just a quick, I almost mentioned at the hospital board meeting because there's usually a lot of township residents there. There's just a lot of vacation. So I felt like I looked around and it wasn't really appropriate for the audience, but in the future, I can definitely, they gave, you know, they always give the updates about how beneficial it is to be working with the community ambulance service. And I want to say, oh, on that note. Um, so yeah, hospital, our hospital board, I mean, hospital board's aware, but in terms of thinking about representation in Greenfield Township as well as that sort of education of those residents.
We had talked internally at a department head meeting about potential of a a mailing to all Greenfield Township residents that we would pay for. I just didn't want it to come off as
Yeah.
aggressive or, you know, so I don't, I don't know. Um, I think the March Township meeting is gonna be critical as well as the upcoming election. So I don't know if we see how the election goes. And then we think about that that mailing going out closely closer when they're setting their budget in in March. And then again, I learned that anyone that's a Greenfield Township could attend their March meeting and help set their levy. So maybe that would be better timing to encourage people to attend the meeting and our request. The other thing is Tom said, and this was blocked before, anytime that Ryan and I want to go back and educate the board, we can. So maybe again, once after their November election, that might be a good time to to educate people.
Yeah, especially with new new members.
Yeah, I think the closer we get to the meeting where it's actually going to take place, the more beneficial it will be because, you know, it's time, time just makes.
Right now, their levy is what it is, so.
Yeah, we we have, we have time at least on our side.
Well, this is a good, good exercise just for us to even have these numbers, you know, it's a very, very small increase, so that's appreciated. So you don't need any action from us at this time. We're just kind of thinking about the strategy for communication. Is that right?
Yeah, just, does anyone have any con connections in Greenfield Township?
We all do. I mean, we all have tons of friends and probably family that live in, you know, so, yeah. Very happily helps me put up uh, campaign signs. All right. Uh, so then we moved the uh, approval of the application for the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority for our lead service line replacement, and that is right now in consent one. Did you have?
I just had a quick question about that. Um, the administrative report says it's replying for a grant and the actual ordinance says it's replying for a loan or a grant. So what's what's the real deal here?
It's a grant.
It's a grant?
Yes, Brian?
Yep, it's all, it's grant funding. If there's not grant funding available, you won't pursue the funding. So it's expected to all be grant funding and uh, it'll be retroactive even. Uh, we're expecting uh, as much as that hundred and thirty-eight thousand and possibly um, some retroactive funding to go to homeowners who have replaced the uh, what's essentially the private side of the lead service line on this project as well. So um, it's a pretty good deal for the city and will help offset the some of the costs for your downtown project already, so.
Baked into the plan, right?
Yep.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve this separately? That's fine. Yeah, Jeff's got. Brian had the second. Uh, with first and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Right, and then I asked Brian, I was gonna text Brian to say there's so many donations related to fireworks. Would you like to read them? And then he texted me that he wanted to read them because there's also some additions. So with that, Brian, did you read all the donations?
Yes, I will. Um, the first one we have up is a a donation to Veterans Park. Um, this is from the Sons of the American Legion. I'm the commander of that, so we're a support group to the regular American Legion. Um, so every year, uh, we put on a chicken dinner after the Memorial Day program. Um, we've been in charge of it for the last two years and so um, it's just as much a donation from the Legion Auxiliary as it is to us. We, they did half the work at least um, helping out. So um, after all the expenses, the chicken, uh, we sold out in an hour and uh, we had four hundred and fifty dollars in in profit that we donated to Veterans Park. So I think as long as that's a need or any other needs related to veterans, we'll probably end up donating most proceeds every year. So um, I'm down for chicken next year. Um, donation to Wabash Dog Park, eight hundred uh, and eight hundred dollars and eight cents for a park bench from Joni Mango. Uh, the Wabash Athletic Complex, there was a twenty-five thousand dollar donation from John Bouquet. The Egan Company donated labor and equipment to set the flag pole at a seven hundred and fifty-dollar value. Uh, fireworks donations are going great. Um, like we said earlier in the meeting, we're focusing on the athletic field unless weather makes us postpone. Uh, so the donations we have for this week are one hundred dollars from Kathy Garrity, a hundred dollars per dental, fifty dollars River Valley Outfitters, two hundred and fifty dollars. Fifty dollars River Valley Outfitters, two hundred and fifty dollars Paul Fleet Fleet Check Insurance. Two hundred and fifty dollars from Heritage Laundromat, two hundred dollars from Bob and Diane Shield. Hundred dollars from Scott and Sally Lean, twenty five dollars from Bruce Kinlan, two hundred dollars from Wabashia Warehouse Liquors. Two hundred dollars from Kellogg Lions Club, one hundred and fifty dollars from Wabashia Rubbish Removal. Uh two thousand dollars from us, the city of Wabashah. Um one thousand dollars from Wabashia Firemen's Relief Association, five hundred dollars from Rosalyn. Alagata, a hundred dollars from Interstate Building Supply, one hundred dollars from Hills Hardware Paint. And two hundred dollars from the American Legion Auxiliary Unit Fifty, and uh they're still rolling in, so we'll have some in August as well. And that does it.
Very good. We have a motion to uh accept the donations. We have a second, Jean. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Very good. Any other announcements? Otherwise, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
There are first from Brian, second from John. All those in favor say aye. Thanks, everybody, for sticking with us. We appreciate your time on this kind of pleasant rainy night.